And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and unit as one with the Lord Jesus Christ.
Cheryl, would you do the world call please?
Here, your decision.
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Cora?
Here.
Councilmember Edson?
Here.
Councilmember Bradley?
Here.
Councilmember Masters?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricky?
Uh, she's working. Okay, at this time, amendments to the agenda. We will be amending the agenda to extend this meeting. Next Monday night at seven o'clock here to have further discussions with the council and the volunteers. So, remind me at the end of the meeting not to adjourn. So, with that, next on the agenda is the status of the volunteer fire department. Okay? It has been brought to my attention that our insurance carrier has informed us because of the current status and what's going on with our fire department, that we have to set some criteria for the situation of notifying, notifying the public and businesses in town and residents on how we are going to address a fire issue. And so, that's what we're gonna do tonight is set policy for that. So that we can power to do it and what we're to do. So, the first item on the agenda is the mayor and the city council needs to come up with a plan on how the city will respond if there's a fire. Number one, what to do, number two, how to do it. Okay? There'll be no public comment because we're talking about, and we'll go straight to council. Yes, Lance?
Could you clarify what you're referring to when you say the current situation with our fire department? Thank you.
The current situation with our fire department is we do not have a fire chief. And I have not received notification from the volunteers that the volunteers are going to be on calls or take calls.
So, have you received notification from them that they're not?
Pardon me?
Have you received notification from them that they're not going to go on calls?
From my understanding, nine one one in Hood River says that they have not been responding.
As of when? Did nine one one give you any information as to when the responses have stopped?
No. I also talked with Assistant Fire Chief Jeff Zerf- Zerfing today. And he said he was gonna be back in contact and let me know as to what their status. And I have not heard back from him. So technically, I don't know, I do not know what the status is, Lance.
Okay, thank you.
So, do you council members have any comments on what kind of plan we need to do and to tell the city to be responsible if there's a fire?
What, just a question, what, what, what has Hood River said as far as they're responding?
Hood River has informed me that, that they will respond. And my understanding is they have been responding and that they would be billing the city of Cascade Locks appropriately for the things that they have to respond for. So right now, I believe that's the status quo. We were informed today by Jim Tremmel, the fire district chief, I think is how's, anyway, I apologize if I didn't pronounce his title properly, but that we had thirty days of mutual aid until August nineteenth, and then at that time, our mutual aid agreement would lapse. So, I believe that we need to come up with a plan. We need to develop a plan that, that we can have in, in effect to be able to, to do something. And right now, the only thing we have is that agreement with Hood River. We could possibly do more checking with other fire departments and see if there's any kind of situations that we could work out on something that we could afford to do. Yes, Tom?
So, again, on the nine one one, nine one one has received calls and from, for to come out here at Cascade Locks and has toned people out and nobody's coming out on it.
Yes.
Do we know how many we've?
Pardon?
Do we know how many they've?
No, I don't know how many.
In my, in nine one one's opinion though, they're not coming out.
Correct.
I don't, okay. From my, I just see what's been written in the Hood River news and, and of course, it's just whatever anybody's saying in the Hood River news. And it appears in there that they're not prepared, not prepared to come out on, on calls. But I don't know, is there, is there something?
They're still, they're still saying that they're gonna come out for thirty days. Their mutual aid agreement, but then the mutual aid agreement will lapse.
So we also have mutual aid with Stevenson, we have mutual aid with North Bonneville. Have we, have we got ahold of them on whether they're coming on?
They've been notified, the, the things with the Washington agencies that I've found is that the Washington agencies have to have a point of contact, somebody from here who's a fireman, to be able to be the point of contact and the person who calls them to come here. And I'm, again, there's, so it's like an assistant fire chief or someone like that. And right now, you know, I'm waiting to hear back. Tom?
Well, I, I, you said we're gonna meet with the volunteers on Monday?
Yeah, I thought after we, yeah.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know just how far we should go until we know for sure. Are the volunteers going to continue being volunteers or are they not? I, I think that's the first thing we have to know personally.
Well, that's true, but the reason why we had to have this meeting was because the insurance, our insurance company said that we had to go through this to establish some ground rules and establish some things for the situation being for what it is right now. And so that's the reason why we're having this meeting. So initially, I would think that right now in the interim, that we're probably gonna fall back on Devin Wells, the fire chief in Hood River. Where it's currently, the situation is right now is he's billing us. So hopefully, we can get something enacted and running that is appropriate and what the city can afford to do to take care of this item. So I think right now, we're, it looks like we have like a thirty day window to get something else established. Kevin?
Um, is the agreement with the Hood River Fire Department a thirty day agreement? Or is it, because that's not a mutual aid thing, that's, if they're gonna be billing us for calls, then that's not mutual aid?
Well, Hood River hasn't gotten back in touch with us. Bob Francis has been on vacation this last week. So I haven't been able to get anything solidified from them because he's been gone. So I'm hoping on Monday that we'll be able to contact him and get some information. Lance?
Okay, so the rea- you're, you're going back to the reason why you called the meeting is because the, the city's insurance program has told you that you should call this meeting and go through a certain agenda?
That's correct.
Okay, and you sent me an email and then in my box I had a copy. I can't tell if it's part of an email or an actual email from someone named John Zachariasen. Is that who you're referring to?
Yes.
So, in this email, it actually says, it describes the situation as fire chief resigning, which we have a letter that says, as well as volunteers refusing to answer calls, which I understood you to say at the beginning of the meeting, we don't have any verification of that. So it sounds to me like John Zachariasen has instructed you to call a meeting based on a situation that may or may not exist. I mean, you haven't, we don't have any confirmation that there's volunteers refusing to answer calls. I mean, without a paid person, we have volunteers who answer calls when they can. And it's possible that, you know, in the last two days, we haven't had volunteers that can answer calls, but we don't know if anyone's refusing to answer calls. So to me, I, I just question the whole reason for this meeting, if it is based, as you said, on what John Zachariasen told you to do. Because we don't have that situation that he describes in his email or part of his email.
Kevin?
If the Hood River News article is accurate, there's a statement from the president of the Volunteer Association saying that they will not be responding to calls. So if that's enough evidence for you, then apparently there is a statement from the president of, and there's also an email from the president of the Volunteer Association that I received about ten o'clock last night that says they're not going to respond to calls. So if you need more verification from that, then I guess we need to ask some of the volunteers that are here. But that's the information that I have so far. And coupled with the information from nine one one that calls have been toned out and no response has been made, as well as the rest of the information seems to indicate that the volunteers are not responding to calls. But, yeah.
Lance?
Okay, well, when I wanna verify something about whether or not a person's going to do something, typically, I wanna ask that person and I just, I'm curious if anyone in the council has talked to a volunteer to find out if that's the case, if there are people that are refusing to answer calls. And, you know, I'll let you guys decide whether you wanna tell us if you've actually talked to a volunteer or not, but I have. I talked to volunteers that said they are responding to calls. And as a matter of fact, within the last week, have responded to calls. So, I mean, I'm just, again, questioning the, whether John Zachariasen has accurate information when he told you to call this meeting, because I doubt that John Zachariasen has talked to the volunteers that I talked to. So, I, I mean, we know that they have, that our volunteers have responded to calls, mutual aid calls as a matter of fact. So, I mean, I know that because I've verified it.
I had a conversation with the Assistant Fire Chief Jeff Zerfing. And he told me that he was gonna go back to the volunteers and ask them if they were gonna start going on calls. Okay? That was this afternoon. I have not heard back from him. Okay? So, to my knowledge, right now, he is the highest commanding person on, in the fire department.
No.
And?
No.
Well, he's the highest commanding person who's came in and talked to me about it. So, to my knowledge, we're doing what we're supposed to do. So, let's continue on with, George. What, Lance?
May I speak?
What?
Oh, okay. I feel like you just ignored what I said. I gave you information that I've talked to volunteers that are responding to calls. And I'm questioning the justification for why we're having this meeting based on that. And I'm also asking the question, has anyone else talked to volunteers? I didn't wait to hear from Jess, I actually talked to people and asked them if they were refusing to respond. So, are you ignoring that moving on or are you going to address that?
I thought I did address it. I told you that I did talk to one of the volunteers. And he told me that he was gonna go back and talk to all of them and find out if they were gonna change their position. Okay?
And I'm telling you that there are volunteers who never had that position. That we don't have a situation where volunteers are refusing to answer calls.
Okay?
Because I've talked to them.
At this point, I feel that because the insurance company told me that I had to do this, that I feel even if it's, even if it's not necessary, I feel that I need to fulfill these requirements to, to cover the city's liability in case we have a miscommunication on any item. We need to do this so that the city is covered. Okay?
Okay.
So do you, do you feel that we should cover the city so that the city's not liable?
Of course.
Okay.
I just wanna clarify, the purpose for the meeting is now hypothetical in case volunteers aren't resp- are refusing to answer calls. Is that correct?
Lance, you know what it is. Right now, we've talked about it, okay? Nine one one has called us. We've had to send letters out to every agency because of the situation that we're in. Okay? If that was the case, why didn't someone come in sooner, which there has been people come in? And why, okay? We need to go on with business and try to get this done. And then we can go on and have a, a discussion next Monday night with everybody and try to work things out. This is a formality. Let's take care, let's do what the insurance company wants us to do. And then we'll have our meeting with the firemen on next Monday. Okay? So, I don't understand your reluctance. Is it, is it the fact that you don't want the city to be covered?
Well, I've already answered that question.
Okay, then. So should we continue and get this done?
Well, I, I guess I question whether we can have an emergency meeting over a formality. I don't think that's legal.
Well, I don't believe it was a formality. You do.
You just said it was.
No, I'm saying that we can look at-
So this is a formality.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe that's a question for the lawyer. Can you call an emergency meeting to cover a formality?
Kevin?
We're not gonna let the lawyer answer that?
Well, if the feeling is that an emergency exists, if you need to, to cover bases in the event of that emergency, yes you can.
I, I guess we can beat around the bush as long as we want here. But either, either the article in the Hood River News is completely made up or it's not. Either the volunteers went on calls since the eleventh. Let's see. Include that limited to public assist, medical calls, fire and injury accident on IED four at mile page post forty-seven. Either they, they are or they aren't. The statements and this-
Can I, can I finish? I don't know what you're reading from.
What? What does that have to do with anything? The, from the Hood River News. From the Hood River News. And according to the Hood River News and according to Mr. Newman, who's sitting here in the audience.
But that information that you just said wasn't in the story, so.
I never said that it was.
Okay. You just said it was from the Hood River News.
No, I didn't.
Hey, hey, everybody, please.
Play the recording back, that's what you said.
Please.
According to the Hood River News, the volunteers are not responding to calls. That information, I think, constitutes an emergency in the city of Cascade Locks. To find out if they are responding to calls, there's a couple volunteers here. If they did vote unanimously to not respond to calls on last Monday night, if that did happen or it didn't happen, I guess we should find that out. But according to the Hood River News, the volunteers are not responding to calls. Front page, today's paper. So there is some evidence that there could be a problem with response in Cascade Locks to emergencies. That, I think, constitutes enough of an emergency that we need to have a meeting and discuss it. Is that satisfactory for you or do we still wanna pretend like there's nothing going on?
Well, I'm not pretending like there's nothing going on. I'm questioning what it says here, that the volunteers are refusing to answer calls. And you're talking about today's paper, right? I mean, I apologize to Mr. Newman, I haven't read the front page article, so.
Was it submitted by Kevin, Hood River News?
But, I mean, if you, I just, when I, I asked my initial question, I mean, the answer was, we don't know if it's true that volunteers are refusing to answer calls. But the reason that our insurance agent is telling us we have to have a meeting is that he's saying volunteers are refusing to answer calls. I just want that clarified, as I'm answering.
Well?
Do we know that volunteers are refusing to answer calls? And I've understood your answer to be, no, we don't know that.
I believe that they are.
You believe that they are?
I believe they are. And the reason why I'd say that is because Jim Tremmel has sent a letter to me rescinding all mutual aid because no one is responding to the calls. So why would he do that?
That's not what it says.
The letter says he's not, that they're, that they're, okay. I don't have the running copy, I'll have to read.
Do you have the letter?
Read the letter.
All right.
Do you have the letter?
I can go get it.
I have it.
Read it into the record.
It sounds like there might be some interest in having that letter made public.
So why would they, why would they decide not to continue with mutual aid if we have people responding to calls, Lance?
I guess maybe the answer's in the letter.
This letter is inform you as of July fourteen, the undersigned, do hereby give a thirty day notice of termination of mutual aid agreement attached addendum concerning the auto aid alarm assignments with the city of Cascade Locks Fire Department and the city of Cascade Locks. This termination will be effective August nineteenth, two thousand and eleven by and for the Hood River County Fire Chiefs. Jim Tremmel was the first one to sign and then the rest to sign. So why would they arbitrarily not continue? What? Hood River Fire Department Chief Devin Wells, Odell Fire Chief Greg Burton, Pine Grove Fire Chief, Greg Burton, he's the same. Parkdale Fire Chief Mike McCaffery and Westside Fire Chief, I can't read his name. So, that's what it is. So, the premise is, we need to do this, okay? So let's, what, Lance?
Did you send a letter to all of our mutual aid partners today saying that we're no longer providing services?
A letter was sent to them by the advice of the state fire marshal that we were not addressing calls and that I had to notify. And the insurance agent said that I had to notify all the appropriate fire departments. Okay?
So, I mean, my question then is why did, why didn't we verify first whether it's true that our volunteers are refusing to answer calls and that we're not providing these services? Because I still, I mean, I still feel like that hasn't been verified. And other than the fact that I have taken the time to talk to volunteers and they told me that they are answering calls. I just feel like that was pre- that was a premature letter and as well as this, you know, these actions by, that we're taking as a result of misinformation to Mr. Zachariasen.
George.
No.
I would, I would say this constitutes an emergency. You don't agree?
Well, I think we should be covered. I think we, you know, I feel like we should have funded the fire department.
Thank you.
Okay. So. So how are we gonna, how are we gonna establish this in the interim, okay? How to do it? What's the council's, how do we wanna address trying to take care of this situation as far as not having a fire chief? And not having any way to respond to calls? Tom?
Well, for mine, I didn't really pick the things up until I, I did read the paper today because I was given the paper on it. Up to that point, I assumed the volunteers would all come in. So I just want, I'm assuming they're all showing up and, and doing it because that's what they've, they've always done. So I think in this process, when you lose a chief, you gotta go to the rest of the people that are out there, see where their, where their organization is at and who's, they become either a volunteer chief or, and if they do have the capabilities of doing that, then you work out through the volunteers. If they don't have the capabilities of doing that, then you start looking outside where you can get help from the, from the chief, from the chief's side of it. So right now, that, that's the issue, is we don't have a, we don't have a chief. But we do have a group of volunteers with a variety, with a variety of skills. So we need to be able to find out from them what are that skill level is there to, to be, to be a chief. And if not, then, then we need to, to find out probably from our mutual aid people potentially to what we can do in the, in the interim to be able to fill that position. Because that's where we're at right now. What we're, what we're, what we're showing on is from the chief, from the chief end of it. So you need to fill that in. That may be in the, you know, before we had a, before we had a paid chief, we had a volunteer chief. And maybe one, maybe those skill, the skill levels are still there within the fire department.
Okay. Well, at this time, maybe then we should go into determining whether or not we're gonna have a paid fire chief or we're gonna have a volunteered fire chief. And whether or not we're gonna be able to give him stipends or any kind of reimbursement for his services rendered. And we also need the volunteers, to have the volunteers, if any, they'll be covered and reported to Workman's Compensation Program underwriters at CIS. Okay? So is there any discussion on how, which direction we wanna take there?
Didn't we just do something a little bit covering the volunteers through compensation? Was that in our last meeting? We put, we passed that on there.
So this is just a formality because, or this is just something else that he wrote when he wrote the things that we needed to address?
Well, I'd love to see if there's potential, because I, again, for mine, I assume the volunteers are there, they're doing their thing and they're, they're picking up where they, because the, the chief has resigned. And so if there's somebody there that can, can do it within the, in the organization, we should be looking at that. And, and yeah, as far as compensation for that, I think that's what the, you know, the way the volunteer organization ran before that was to be able to have a stipend for the, for the chief's position.
Yes, Lance?
I, I think we should have a paid fire chief. I, I think that's, that's the appropriate way to run this. I haven't forgotten the night that we were all here and our, the man who's currently our assistant fire chief came in and told us, you'll never find someone to do this, the fire chief job as a volunteer. That's the person who would be next in line to step up and do that, has the expertise to do it. You'll never find someone to do that. I believe those are his exact words. So, I, I feel like going out, trying to, trying to find a volun- volunteer fire chief would be, I mean, based on the information we have from our own volunteers, would be futile. At, at any rate, it would be more time consuming than trying to figure out a way to have a paid fire chief. I also think a bigger issue is our paramedic services. Because we actually have a contract to provide paramedic services. And we have a council policy that we provide forty hours of paramedic services to this community as a minimum level of service. And I don't want us to pay, pay over that issue just by looking at the fire chief position. It's, it's an important position and it's a revenue generating position that would allow us to do the kind of things you're talking about with paying stipends for, for volunteers.
Okay?
Thank you.
Tom?
Is there anything we can do to get a point of contact in town so we can use Stevenson? Because I know they've, they've done a lot of responding for us.
Right now, it's just Devin Wells currently, the Hood River Fire Chief, Hood River City Fire Chief. Tom?
Well, again, I would say you're selling the, the volunteers kinda short there. I, I think we probably have, we've got volunteers that have been doing it for a long time and I think there are some skill levels there that certainly could do this. And, and all we're looking at is interim. This is a, this is a, something that just popped up for us when, when it happened. You, you react to it. We were just, um, didn't resign that long ago. And, uh, I, I would assume, or how I would look at it, or being around organizations, that somebody in the organization then from that training moves up to it. Um, especially in interim. We're just looking at the interim and I think there are very well made people, need people in that skill level that can do it in the interim. If not, then you do, you look, you look outside of it. And, um, same thing from the paramedic side, I agree. We, we need to look at paramedic or, um, we also had some paramedics in our town that we might be able to approach to, to, certainly at least approach on whether they can do some things in the interim. If not, then you, then we need to go beyond on that too. Cause from my end, if, if I'm gonna pay as far as where our budget is, and the, and the budget isn't very good, um, I, I think that, uh, I think that budget can at least, can, can handle a, uh, can handle a, a paramedic.
Okay. Lance?
Okay, well, first of all, uh, we hadn't mentioned the word interim, so I think that's a different, that, I mean, that's, that's another, another possible solution is to have an interim, either volunteer or interim paid fire chief or interim paid paramedic. Um, but I think that's a separate discussion from what George asked, which was whether we wanna volunteer or a paid chief. Um, as far as selling the volunteers short, I'll remind you that I didn't, um, I didn't make that up. It, I was attempting to quote our current, um, assistant volunteer fire chief. I wasn't making it up, so it would be him selling it, the volunteers short rather than me. And, um, also, to think that this just popped up, I think is, um... I, I don't think it did just pop up. Um, we've had the resignation letter for a week or two, but, uh, over the course of the last six months, um, we've made decisions that, um, negatively impacted the revenue of the fire department that have led to this, um, this situation. I did just get handed a copy of the Hood River News article, um, haven't had time to read it all, but I think the quote that was referenced earlier, um, isn't that they've stopped responding, well, it does say they've stopped responding. But then you have to continue reading the sentence, there was no, there was no period there. There was another clause to that sentence which says, because we feel our safety is in jeopardy. And I think that, as most of us have heard, um, without, um, a paid and trained fire chief, um, to take charge of the scenes when you have an accident you're responding, um, uh, it's that, it's that person who's in charge of the safety of the volunteers. And so it's understandable that volunteers would worry for their safety when you've removed the person or the position that is responsible for their safety. So I would encourage everyone to, um, don't stop reading till you get to the period.
Thank you.
Kevin? So you acknowledge that the volunteers are, aren't responding now, or are you still on the fence on that?
Uh, this doesn't say all, it says they. I've talked to people since this came out.
Have you talked to any people that told you about a unanimous vote not to respond?
No, I have not.
You haven't?
No. In fact, I've talked to people that said there was no vote.
Really?
Yeah.
Tom?
Well... If the chief is gone on vacation or gone somewhere, you, you don't, not go out and do things. So you gotta treat it like we've got an interim, we got a, a thing going on. We pick up the, we pick it up and we, with our skill levels and the things we got going on and, and we move ahead with it until, until the process goes on through and we're able to, to work on that. Which is to work within the volunteers, finally have in there to, that's the skill levels. And I know we've got people with good skill levels in there that should be able to take care of this. Now, whether they want to or not, we've gotta look at that. Then if not, then you move outside of that to, to see what skill levels you have. But just the fact that the chief isn't there, there's a lot of times the chief's not here and, and we still are gonna go out, we're still gonna go out on the things when the chief isn't here now. We've all, they've all had the training to go, to go do that. The chief isn't on every call that we, that we go on. So we should be able to, we should be able to manage it with, without a chief in a short period of time. Cause they should be able to manage it. We should be able to start looking at what we need to do, whether it's within the volunteers or whether it's without, outside the volunteers. We need to start looking at, looking at what we're gonna do there.
Okay, well, let me call for consensus vote then that we ask for, uh, a volunteer from the fire department, uh, the assistant fire chief to volunteer to fulfill this position. Huh?
He already told us he won't.
Well, we're gonna ask again now. I'm, I'm asking that this situation's changed and if he's willing to step up and do that now. Okay, so, do you feel we should ask him to do that?
Well, again, where, where I'm at, I'm not sure of all the skill levels in the, but as I understand it, the skill levels are building, building and we've got some, some very good skilled people in. And I, I don't wanna cut anybody short that has the potential to, to, to move up and, and wants to take on this, to keep this thing, keep this thing going. Cause it's, it's, you know, when you volunteer for something like that, that's, that's what you do. You're wanting to help people, you wanna be part of what's going on in the community and you, and there's always the person who's looking for the, for the, for the opportunity and, um, that has a skill level. They just haven't got the opportunity. And all I'm saying is on that is an interim.
Correct.
We've got lots of people with lots of skills and they all know what they need to do when they go out on it. They just need somebody who is designated the leader of that, the leader of that group. And I just wanna find out whether there's somebody there who's prepared to pick that up. If not, then we need to find, we need to go out looking to, to find that, that leadership. But at the same time, we need to find out whether there's, um, people with the paramedic skills that are prepared to come out and, and help from, from that side. And if not, then, then we're gonna need to look at, we're gonna need to look at a, a paramedic position too. Or at least a paramedic position. And I think as far as spending money, that's where, that's where I think, that's where I think our, our budget is at can, can, can handle some in there, some of the paramedic side.
So, Tom?
Yeah, I think we should, before we make any, any of this type of decision, I think we should meet with the fire department first. Talk to them. I, I wanna get it straight from them.
Is there any further discussion on... On this? Lance?
Um, well, I mean, I think we, I, I think that we've created the budget, um, that is now tying our hands behind our back when, but the truth is, we need a paid person. The reason why, um, you're able to generate revenue, the reason why volunteers feel comfortable, feel safe going out on calls is cause you have a, a paid person, uh, a paid staff person and I, I think we have to examine that budget and find a way, um, to hide our front of the position. I think, I mean, to me, that's, that's the best solution. Um, as far as interim moves, um, you know, we have a letter from a former fire chief who said he wanted to continue on as a volunteer. I mean, let's ask him. Um, let's ask him if he'll be, uh, a consultant and get us through this interim period. I mean, he's the one with the expertise. He's a paramedic. He's the one who, who has generated revenue for this community over, you know, the last five, six years. Um, he's got the know-how to do it. And, you know, I know that some people have to swallow their pride to do that, but I think it's, that's what, that's what the community deserves. Especially since as you, you know, are pointing out, we're in an emergency here. Mutual aid's pulling out. Let's see if we can get some help from the one person who's been helping us all these years.
Any other comments from council?
I'd like to make a motion that we establish a meeting for next Monday with the whole volunteer fire department.
It's already been added to the agenda, Tom. I added that to the agenda at the very beginning. Because of the discussion I had with Jeff Sersby. But, you see what I'm saying? We're supposed to have it next Monday at seven here. Okay? So... With that, I guess we'll go on to the next item, cause we're not getting anywhere. Okay, how will the future of the fire department, uh, be in its capacity? Number one, budget. Okay? So this is an is- issue that we gotta talk about is budget. Is there any comments about how we are to come up with, uh, the money to finance this department in the future? Please, please keep your comments, okay?
Still no public comment?
There is no public comment today.
Or any of it, huh?
No.
Well, there's only one way these things get fired. You've gotta tax, uh, gotta tax the citizens. There's gotta be... And our, our problem is, is we've got a pretty low, uh... We've got citizens that don't have a lot of money, don't have a lot of, we're, we're in these times with everybody else for these times. And if you wanna, if you wanna run it, if you wanna run it to levels that it appears to be going, that's the level it was, you're gonna have to tax people pretty hard, so, you know. We've gone over what is level of service and I think, uh, when you look at level of service, you have to first look at how much money you have. And we know, we know pretty much all the way. We got, we've got so much coming from our taxpayers, we got so much coming from, uh, from, um, potential ambulance service, we got so much coming from Mole County. And that's what we got. If you wanna get more than that, you either have to go out there as they were looking and doing is going out and get more calls, but the money is being spent faster than they can, is being spent faster than they can make money. So the only other way to get it that you, that you know it's gonna be solid is, is you have to give them to citizens. We can't, we can't give, we can't give to them. Citizens gotta give to them. And, and frankly, from my side of it, the, the way the money was, you know, I, I had problems with how the money was being spent. And, and I gotta be showing that the money is being spent well before I would wanna go to the citizens, ask them for, for money. I mean, you just can't keep, you can't keep grossly overspending your, spending beyond your, your revenues. And that's, everything that I see shows that. So if you wanna fund it, there's only one way, there's only one way to fund it. You have to go to citizens and ask them for, for more money. That's it.
I agree, Tom. Uh, I, I think that some sort of a, to be able to, to get money, the only way to do is that we'd have to take it out to the vote of people and the people are gonna have to vote and approve it. The vote of the people, it goes, you have to do that at ballot time. It has to go, it has to go to the vote of the people, not at the town hall. Has to be an official... Alright, Ray, let's take a break.
Did you just take a break?
Fire call is of the council's opinion that we are going to have the first tone out be to the volunteers of Cascade Locks and then it's gonna go to Hood River if they don't respond.
Yeah.
Yes.
As far as I know, the volunteers are responding, so, you know, other than, they're, but you are stuck in a situation that they are volunteers. That's, and if they're somewhere else or doing something else, they can't get there, they, they can't get there.
Okay.
But that's how it always goes. That's how it has always gone. So, you know, if, nothing has changed. Uh, you know, and if you have one perp- if you have one paid person, that paid person's only there forty hours. And, and I don't want, if you're gonna pay me overtime or, uh, uh, and that's what we've been doing. You've still only got one person. You can't, you can't go out on a call with one person. So if only one paid person shows up, you're not gonna go on anything. So you gotta have more people there no matter what. And if the volunteers respond, enough respond to be able to do the call, then, yeah.
Okay, so, that's...
To me, that's what we've always done. We just continue to do it.
I know, but we're gonna have to notify Hood River. Okay, at the nine-one-one.
Well, apparently Hood River wants to have a call from, apparently Hood River wants to have a call from somebody. Everybody wants to have a call from somebody that lets them, lets them know that we need the, the mutual aid. So to me, that's the process we need to figure out is how we're, is who's going to...
I know.
If the volunteers aren't, if the volunteers can't make, get out on the, on the call, we have to have somebody to be able to alert Hood River on. Or any, any of our mutual aid partners. And that's how it always goes too. So right now, it was the chief. So we need to be able to, we need to be able to get ahold of somebody who's going to be, you know, be around enough to be able to make that call.
Okay, so, um, Lance and Kevin, you're the only ones. Uh, do you wanna, you want me to ma- make it the policy to have the first call go to the volunteers? And then if it's not answered, Hood River will address it.
How much of a time lag is that gonna cause?
Uh, I don't know. But right now, right now, the way it's set up, I think it's set up where Hood River's taking the first call.
I mean, I'm just simply going on what's been reported and, and what's been reported is that the volunteers aren't responding. So I would rather have the call go to the agency that's promised to respond unless we can get some confirmation that the volunteers are actually going to respond to calls. If, if it's five minutes, I mean, five minutes can make a big difference. If they tone and wait five minutes to see if anybody responds, that five minutes could be critical because now we're waiting for something to come all the way from Hood River to get here.
Alright.
So... Uh, based on the evidence that I, that we have right now is that they're not responding. I haven't heard anything different from, from the president of the Volunteer Association.
Okay. What do you think Lance?
Uh, are you back on the first item? How will we respond when there is a fire? Is that what we're deciding?
I'm trying to set the policy for, because that's the main thing that we need to get established. We need to get the policy established on what we're gonna do if there's a fire. Okay?
And so, and could you clarify, cause you just said, should the, should, should we tell, should we call the volunteers first? Or should we have it go to Hood River? Could you clarify what you mean by Hood River?
The Hood River, uh, Fire Department.
The Hood River Fire Department. Okay, so we're just talking about fire calls, we're not talking about medical?
Well, it's fire and EMS right now.
So we are talking about fire and medical calls?
Right, it covers both.
Okay. Uh, so this is, this is information to give to the nine-one-one system?
Right, so that, so that there's no confusion for them.
And this is for, just for the next thirty days until we can, we can no longer, at that point, we can no longer go to Hood River? Is that correct? Because on August nineteenth, they're gonna stop responding to mutual aid requests? Is that right?
That's only if the vol- if the volunteers are responding, the vol- then the mutual aid is never going to go away.
I thought that the letter you read said that as, on August nineteenth, it was going away.
But immediately, if the volunteers are responding to calls, that letter is no longer in effect. Immediately.
I don't think that's what the letter, that's not what the letter says. That's not what you just read.
I know what the letter says.
You're adding your own thoughts and words to what the reality is.
So are we talk- I'll just repeat my question. Are we talking about a policy for the next thirty days until we no longer have mutual aid? Based on that letter? Is that what we're talking about, George? Cause you're asking the question, I'm just trying to clarify. Well, I'm actually asking a question.
Well...
I'm asking for clarification.
You know, I don't have the fire chief here to tell you what he told me, okay? But he told me,
When you say the fire chief, could you talk, be specific about who you're talking about?
The state fire marshal, I'm sorry, not the fire chief.
Okay.
The state fire marshal.
Okay.
Said that if the volunteers are back and responding to calls, he says, "This goes away." Because there'll still, there'll be mutual aid agreements.
But he didn't sign that.
I'm just telling you what he told me. You ask me a question, I'm answering to the best of my knowledge. Okay?
All right, so I need to,
All right, everybody, please. Let Lance talk to me. And it's, and we're trying to take care of it, thank you.
I guess what, where I'm coming from is,
Okay, I'm gonna need another break if you guys can.
We have a letter from, we have a letter from our mutual aid partners that says it's over in thirty days.
Show us some of that.
And you're t- and you're saying that the state fire marshal who's not, has not signed that letter, is saying that that letter's gonna go away. So, are you telling me that the state fire marshal has promised you, um, mutual aid contracts? If our vol- if our volunteers respond to our own fires? And medical calls? Is that what you're telling me? 'Cause I need to know that before I give you the,
Lance, let's, let's try to get back on, on what we're trying to talk about. Because all I'm trying to do is establish a policy. Whether or not it's for thirty days, we have to establish a policy tonight on how we're gonna treat a, a call, okay? So can we just answer that question and carry on?
Yes, absolutely.
Even if it's only for thirty days, or if it's until the thirty days that we come to our deadline? Can we establish this policy?
Absolutely. I'm as, you're asking for my consent and I'm saying,
So, and I'm asking you,
I would like to know, are we talking about a thirty day policy or are we talking about a policy for longer than that?
It's just probably just an temporary thing.
Before I give my consent to a policy, or don't give my consent to a policy, I'd like to know whether it's thirty days or whether it's longer.
All right.
I mean, what are you asking for?
Let's,
Kevin?
You're not gonna answer my question.
My, 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 my vote would be to,
Kevin answered my question.
Are, are you gonna run the whole meeting? Are you gonna talk through the whole thing?
I'm asking, I'm asking,
Does anybody else get a chance to?
I mean, he asked me for my consent. You're actually interrupting me.
Time out, time out, please.
You're just trying to do a second.
I've already answered you once.
No, you didn't. You didn't say thirty days or not. Is it thirty days or longer?
I said, let's do it for at least thirty days.
So it's a thirty day policy?
So let's just make it a thirty day policy.
Say, "Call the volunteers."
Okay. So yes, you wanna do which?
The, the first call should go to the volunteers, yes.
Okay, first call to the volunteers and then to Hood River, okay? Tom?
Volunteers and Hood River.
Kevin?
Uh, without knowing how long the, the delay is gonna be, I would have to say Hood River first since my understanding is that the volunteers are not gonna respond.
Tiffany? Tiffany?
I think I'm gonna have to agree with, with, uh, Kevin.
Dawn?
Unless I know the volunteers are gonna respond, you know, I'm going by what everything in the paper says, I think it should go to the nine-one-one first.
Okay, I agree with that myself. The consensus is that the call will go to Hood River first, until we get a notification from the volunteers that they are going to respond to calls.
Why don't you discuss the issue with the volunteers?
Mr. Larranay?
They may not be responding.
Thank you. Brad?
Thank you.
Okay? This time, we've established the policy of what we're gonna do if there's a fire. And so, uh, we'll be in contact with nine-one-one and let them know. And until that time, hopefully on, by Monday, that we will have an answer from the volunteers on exactly what their status is. Uh, we will discuss this when we have the meeting with the volunteers on Monday at seven o'clock, so.
So we just fired the volunteers?
Yeah, pretty much.
You have a question, Lance? Do you still have an order?
Do you?
I got orders.
Are you the order? All right. Order, order. Okay? With that, uh, there's nothing further to discuss? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
To continue.
To, to continue.
Make a motion.
I would make a motion to continue to Monday.
You can't do that.
There's a question out the door.
You have a question Lance?
I was just waiting for a discussion. I mean, I would like, before you make that motion, yeah. I mean, you, we have a list of things that you said that our insurance agent had to, we had to address. We've only addressed one of those things. I mean, you al- you've already brought up the, um, the issue of paid versus volunteer. You started to bring up budget, but there's, there's a whole long list of things in here. And now we're continuing the meeting. So, I mean, at the very least, it says here, "Follow the advice of your lawyer." I'd like to ask the lawyer, should we, should we go through the things that are on the list we got from our insurance agent? Or should we continue the meeting? At the very least, let's ask him.
Well, the emergency is to set policy as to where the calls go. Now, if you want to, that's the, the, the red hot iron in the fire. Once that policy is set, if you want to adjourn till Monday and address those, it's not gonna be a life or death situation.
Have you read this?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause that's, it, it doesn't say that that's the red hot issue here. It says that we should go through all of these things.
It's my legal analysis that that's the recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
Call for the question.
Now we have to vote on whether or not to vote or not. Once somebody calls for a question, you have to conduct a vote on whether or not to have a vote.
So, Confer vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion carries. And all those in favor of adjourning or extending the meeting until, uh, Monday at seven o'clock with the volunteers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes.